Welcome to this morning's committee hearing. Please forgive me for my tardiness, joined by Mr. Buscaglia, Kocorian, O'Farrell, Price, and Mr. Sadio. All right. Who is disrupting, we're gonna remove Mr. Sadio. So, Mr. Clerk.
Mark this day down.
You know what, Mr. Clerk, why don't I take, we have, we'll read the agenda later. I have two cards from the public, why don't we bring them up? Let's bring up Mr. Coleman, and I think it's Mr. Herman. So, Mr. Coleman gets a minute, Mr. Herman gets two.
Hi there, good morning, Johnny Coleman.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, I'm Johnny Coleman with No Olympics L.A. I wanted to tell two stories real quick, I only have a minute. One of them was taking place right here three years ago, where I'm standing. Paul Gonzalez got up here, a boxing coach from the 1984 Olympics, and he was rah rah selling the bid. Does anyone know where he is right now? He's currently incarcerated, waiting trial for sexually abusing one of his students, and that's something that will definitely not come up in the rest of conversation today, nor will it throughout any of the youth sports conversations, the abuse happening in Pasadena, in Orange County, through the Olympic youth sports systems. The second story is about Fernando Guerra, who created the 88% and 83% polls. We found out recently that he was a registered lobbyist in 2017, working for Sandstone, which has four properties around Olympic developments in consideration. It also has a contract with Uber for flying taxis for 2028. That's a conflict of interest. This whole bid was built on bullshit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman.
I'd like to submit these papers for the record, please. Your swat sicca. Except I didn't give one from one particular asshole. So, you see, even in this world of the Olympics, the boxer, the fighter, the city attorney's report doesn't exclude sexual harassers of children. This is the reason why we continue to talk about why God hates homosexuality, men fucking children, and the retention and dispersment of funds to pay these fucking white niggers too, to fuck your children in the Olympics.
Mr. City Attorney, that's gotta be a little off-topic. Mr. City Attorney, can we get it, can you get on topic?
Physical impact statement submitted, yes, I'm on item two. City attorney's report, fuck white niggers too. Now, as far as my general public comment.
There is no general public comment, just stay on the items.
Troubling is the defendant's second statement imploring others to shoot the fucking nigger.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you. Can we, can we end this time? All right, Sergeant, just have him sit down, he's off-topic. All right. So, the clerk, clerk, why don't we read the items, and then I would bring up the department, that closes general public comment.
Good morning, council members. Item one is a Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners' report relative to a grant awarded an amount of $4,114,243 from the Los Angeles 2028 Organizing Committee for the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games for allocation to the Department's Spring 2020 Project Plan. Item two, City Attorney Report and Order is dated January 15th, 2020, adding Chapter 186 to the Los Angeles Administrative Code to establish a youth sports partnership fund for the receipt, retention, and dispersment of funds. The city anticipates receiving pursuant to the host city contract for the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games for the purposes of supporting the development of youth sports, and CAO and CLA joint report relative to the status of the youth sports program participation agreement.
Thank you. So, why don't we bring up CAO, CLA, Wreck-It Parks, and reps from LA 28? Come on, Mike, walk faster than that, we see you back there. Okay, guys, welcome, let's get started.
Good morning, John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. Before you are a report from the CLA and the CAO regarding the youth sports agreement that has been negotiated between the city and LA 28, as well as Board of Recreation and Parks Commission actions recommending approval of the youth sports agreement and the annual plan for the first part of the program. The council, and I don't know how much history, there's a lot of history here, basically we were requested to, we're positioned to negotiate a games agreement to establish the relationship between LA 28 and the city over the next eight years. The key component of that was the youth sports program, which would bring up to 160 million dollars to the city to fund youth sports programming. Your city staff and LA 28 felt it was important to get that youth sports agreement done now, immediately, so we could get those programs up and running immediately. So, we pivoted to the youth sports agreement, which is now in front of you. We will be coming back to you soon with the full games agreement. And so, what I think would be helpful is to pass this over to Mike Scholl with Department of Recreation and Parks, and he can fill you in on the details.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning, council members. Mike Scholl, General Manager, Department of Recreation and Parks. Very excited to be here today. This has been a lot of work and process in the past with LA 28 and all members of the city family to get to where we're at today. This is, in short, the largest sports and fitness equity program ever in the history of the Department of Recreation and Parks. We will be subsidizing with your approval, and ultimately the city council's approval, we'll be subsidizing sports and fitness across the entire city of Los Angeles. We expect our numbers to drastically grow, meaning we're looking at almost doubling the number of kids participating in sports and fitness across the city. We'll be offering it at every rec center where you will have the ability to apply and to be subsidized for a sport or fitness that we offer at that facility. But of, we roughly have approximately 123 recreation centers where the mass majority of our sports and fitness activities occur. Of that 123, 87 will be what we call site certified, meaning you need to show no proof of anything, you show up and it's the cost of that program will simply be $10. And it'll be a quality sport or fitness class that we offer, that will include your, you know, the trophies, the uniforms, the officiating, the coaching, all the associated costs that normally is passed on to our constituents, which those days will be long gone. So, you know, mothers, single mothers, single fathers, you know, that weren't able to afford, will now be able to come in and, you know, afford to have their children and children, families with multiple children, who sometimes had to choose which child got to participate, will no longer be the case. At a rate of $10, we simply feel that there will be no child left behind anywhere in the city of Los Angeles that'll be able to participate in our sports and fitness program. So, extraordinarily exciting time for us. What's before you today is actually the spring. One of the agreements today is the sports plan, the project plan is what we call it for the spring only. So, we're looking at launching immediately following the city council's approval. So, our spring, we start advertising for our programs honestly towards the end of next week, and, you know, we'll be launching this program right away, and so this money will immediately start being felt by all the communities across the city, particularly our lower-income neighborhoods.
Thank you. So, why don't we hear from 28, and then CAO, you could close it up.
Just, John Wickham, real quick, I wanted to hit a couple of points. The way the annual plans will be structured, there is the general recreational programming that Mike mentioned. There's also a component for signature programs, so that the city can develop new and interesting programs, such as the proposed new judo program with U.S. Judo, did I got that right?
Yes.
And then also to develop adaptive sports programming. So, this is the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, and so it's important that there be an adaptive sport program that's developed. This is a new area, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but there's the capacity to develop those programs built into the program here. And in addition, it was extremely important that there be a safe sport program incorporated into this, and so either Mike or LA 28 can discuss a little bit more of the safe program component that's in front of you as well.
Thank you, Jack.
Maybe if I just add, council members, that, you know, the adaptive sports programming that we're going to be, it'll be the first time that we're actually going to be institutionalizing inside a recreation and parks adaptive sports program. And that's, now, for the spring, you know, it's, we're just starting. You know, it is a program that we're going to have to build over time, but I just wanted you to know that, you know, how extraordinarily committed we are to making sure that we're offering program to all children of all abilities. And we're looking at bringing in different partner organizations to do that, and we'll have, I know we have some organizations in the audience today that, you know, this agreement doesn't just include us, we're going to be looking at bringing on partners to help us with some of the, some of the programming that we're doing across the city, particularly around adaptive sports, but I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Yes, good to see you.
Good morning, I'm Brent Sculp, representing LA 28, and just briefly want to say how delighted we are to be here with you, moving this program forward. Obviously, we believe in the power of sport, and especially in the power of sport to change kids' lives and to make communities better, and so we're delighted that this is our first substantial commitment towards that effort to make sport available for all kids in LA, regardless of zip code, regardless of ability. For us, this is an important moment, and we are confident and excited about launching this program with you. And thank you to Mr. Scholl and his team for all of the very deliberate work to date. We're feeling good that we're in a really strong place, and excited about these opportunities being made available to kids right away.
Okay, CAO?
Sure. Brent, say hi to the CAO, and I think another action that your body will be taking today is the creation of the youth sports, excuse me, the youth sports partnership fund, which would be a separate fund for transparency and accountability, where the funds will actually be received by the city that are coming through this partnership. It'll be administered by the CAO and will be used in accordance with the agreement that is before you today.
Thank you. Members, questions? Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all. This is really exciting. It's been a long road to get here, and I think one of the best parts of the silver lining of being the 28 host is that we have the benefit of this many years of youth sports programming that the city is gonna benefit from until then. So, I'm really excited to actually have this proposal now before us. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about how it is going to work. First of all, Mr. Sayhi, you mentioned setting up the separate fund. Just so I'm clear, this is going to be a special fund, and it's going to be, the expenditures will be measured in some way that it is not supplanting any current services provided by Recreation and Parks. Every penny of this money will be spent to increase participation, increase equity. It will not be used as some way to sort of backfill some of the cuts that Recreation and Parks has incurred over the years, right?
That is correct, and I'm sure Mr. Scholl can attest to the plan that they have to make sure that they keep track of the baseline that's been established today, and the enhanced services that will be delivered as a result of this agreement.
And I decided that, council member, so just so we're clear, the, all of the money is directly gonna go towards, you know, our constituents and the children participating in these programs, and none of it will be supplanting, or, you know, we've set up a very, very robust system of our accounting and being able to go back and reconcile, you know, all of our participation. So, we've got a very detailed system of how we track the number of registrations in each of our facilities by sport, by fitness, by gender, and all of that. Now, if, when we're advertising this program, kids that were participating in the program, say at any particular rec center, they will be subsidized even if they were in the program before, just so that, I mean, so I don't consider that supplanting, I just wanted to make sure that you understood, it wasn't, there would obviously be an increase, but the kids that were already participating will still benefit.
No, that's terrific, and the main thrust of this is, you know, between now and 2028, we're going to have two mayors, we're gonna have future council members who aren't sitting here now, we're gonna have future budget committee chairs, and I want this to be as crystal clear as it can be, and I know LA 2028 is gonna have to make regular reports to the council about this. I hope that in every one of those reports, we will be reminded, this city will be reminded that this is to increase services, and this isn't a way then to divert future wreck and park funding to other city purposes. It can only be considered an increase, and wreck and park should not suffer because it now has this special fund as well.
In addition, the youth sports agreement has language that there is no supplementation, supplantation built into the structure.
And that's great, but future council members are going to need to be reminded of that. Mr. Wickham, you'll be here, and Mr. Sayhi, you'll be here. So, you know, some of us won't be, but you'll be here, so continue to grind home that point, please.
I will remember this moment.
Thank you, that's number one. Number two, all of this money, I was not quite clear, I'm assuming all of this money is spent on programming and operations, but if there are needs for capital investments in order to facilitate participation, can that be, can the special, can the special fund be used for that?
No.
Upgrades to facilities and those sorts of things?
It cannot.
Okay, okay. And then finally, on marketing, I know there's a tiny part of this that can be spent on marketing for programs, outreach to increase participation, I think that's important and it's good, and I hope that'll be multilingual and so on. I was curious, though, are we able to use any of the intellectual property of LA 2028, the U.S. Olympic Committee, the Olympic Games, in connection with that? Or have we figured that out yet? Because some of these, you know, I think we want to celebrate the fact that these services have been brought to the people of Los Angeles by the Olympics, but I don't know where that line is.
So, this is AP Diaz, Recreation and Parks. We agree with that sentiment, and it is in our thought process as we grow and brand this program throughout the city, but I would probably defer some of these questions to LA 28. They are also in the process of securing up exactly how the marks can be used, by whom. It's obviously a very sensitive and important asset, but if Brent wanted to add some more to that.
And I don't mean to put you, if we haven't settled that, we don't need to spitball it here and try and figure it out, so I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's, I think it's especially valuable, especially if we were going out to get private partnerships also in support of these programs, there's obviously great leverage benefit in this as well.
Agreed, and I appreciate the question. As AP said, we're still working out exactly what the possibilities are with the IOC. It's their, it's their intellectual property, and we are the stewards of that, so we are, we are doing what we can. I would say collectively, our objective is, the objective you just stated, is that we want to encourage as many other partners to come forward to the city and contribute their own resources as well. And probably the best way to accomplish that is for this to be a city program, a wreck and parks program, and for everybody to know that and appreciate that and honor it with a lot of proud supporters of that effort. And so, we, I think, are encouraged to stand as one, a large anchor, but one of many proud supporters of wreck and parks programming, and encourage the capacity building within wreck and parks over time. We are equally as interested as we are in getting this opportunity available to kids right now. We also want to make sure that these opportunities are available to kids long after the Olympic Games, and so building capacity for the department and those deep relationships with many partners is part of the objective of this project.
Terrific, thank you very much. Well, Mr. President, wreck and parks has had, as part of- part of, a core part of its mission for as long as I've been around here, equity. And it has been a driving vision of this department to provide equity in recreation and sports and participation. Unfortunately, since the Great Recession, because of resources, sometimes that vision has been held back. And I just think this infusion of the benefits of the 2028 Olympics is really going to help that vision to blossom. And every neighborhood in Los Angeles is going to benefit. The youth of every part of the city is going to benefit from this for generations to come. And I just really want to applaud everybody on a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. And also based on something else that Mr. Kukorian said, I think that we will create a subcommittee within this committee. It'll be chaired by you, Mr. Buscayeno, and your job will be to handicap who is here in 2028. With that said, Mr. Sadiya.
How can we get to zero, in terms of zero cost for the public?
Well, we, we made a conscious decision, you know, based on the work that we've seen and talking with other agencies, that the $10 is more of a buy-in by the public, you know, to make sure that there's just, there's some level of commitment financially. So it really wasn't a matter of, it really wasn't a financial thing that we, the reason why we went with $10, it was more of, more of just making sure that, you know, the participants had some level of buy-in. And, you know, and talking with other agencies across the nation, that was a consistent message that we all heard, I believe, from, from around the nation about how a program like this would best work. But certainly, if there was, I, you know, I'll just say, certainly if there was any reason why somebody couldn't pay, nobody's going to be turned away. I want to make sure of that. Regardless of, you know, whether they can pay even the $10, nobody's going to be turned away.
I appreciate that. I'm going to quote you on that. There are two, so two concerns I have with that. One is, so there are, in fact, in the city, or I will say for my district, there are areas where this is cost prohibitive, as much as we would think that it is not, but we can just look to our streets and the divide that exists. And so I think of working mothers with before kids. It's just, it's not an option, right? It's 40 bucks, it's 50 bucks. I don't know if this is one-time cost or is it per area, right? Is this for judo? Is this $10 for swimming, $10? So then if it's, the kids want to play two or three sports, we're talking 30 and times four, or 120, and that's not in the budget. So clearly, I know our goal is not to prohibit participation. That's one. Two, I just think for us, as a city and as an organization, as we engage in this endeavor, reducing administration and costs. And so charging money requires us to set up some systems to take in money. And when it's not, then we don't have to, to deal with that. So there's, there's an administrative aspect to this that I think there's probably more efficiencies not to. And then in my district, clearly, I mean, I have 10% homeownership, 90% renters. I've got super low income. I've been in these households, I've been in the affordability units. We've got several buildings right now engaged in efforts to stop rent increases. And that's what these are. These are just a series of small costs. The Olympics and the utilities and the trash pickup and the et cetera, et cetera. And life becomes challenging. That's not our goal here. Our goal is to engage the maximum in terms of public participation and youth participation with respect to the Olympics and show, again, that the city knows how to make the Olympics work and benefit the city, the whole city. And so I, I'd like for us to go back and figure out how we can either get this to zero cost or to make sure that people understand that nobody gets turned away.
We'll make sure of that, council member. And we're reporting on it regularly. I promise you that. There's, this whole program is, is founded on equity. And it's, there's no chance of us not, you know, making sure that a child can't participate in these programs. I assure you of that.
I think we're, I think we're going to go kind of around the horn here. We'll start with Mr. Buscayeno and then I'll go over to you, Mr. O'Farrell and then Mr. Price. So Mr. Buscayeno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And happy to see this come forward. We were all in Lima, Peru. Many of us, when we celebrated the fact that we will be welcoming the Paralympic Olympic Games in 2028 with this agreement that we will provide adequate funding for our youth programming through the Department of Recreation and Parks. So congratulations to all of us. With that, of course, it's an awesome responsibility to ensure that these programs are implemented accordingly. And there's a lot of money coming our way. I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same page as it relates to this committee receiving the project plan for the specific period of time that the plan would be covered. We, apparently that these dollars, wondering why these allocate, the allocated dollars came so late. Weren't these dollars supposed to be allocated last fall? October?
We, it was our, for rec and parks, it was our goal to implement this program as, as getting it going as quickly as possible. I mean, it was just, it took some time to get through the details of, you know, it's like you described, it's a massive program. We wanted to make sure we got it right. And I think we're finally at a point to where we, we all feel that we've got it right. So yes, there was some delay, but ultimately, I think the program will be benefited, bettered because of it.
Proud of that. And if I could just add, it does not diminish the overall potential amount of money, the 160 million. So even launching a few months more than anticipated does not reduce the, the principal.
And as far as the, the traditional classes and leagues, I know there was a decision to allocate $3.7 million to traditional classes and leagues and the remaining dollars to, on judo and tennis. How's that decision made? I know skateboarding is going to be an Olympic game. And then we're building out skate parks, as you know, throughout the city. And we're proud of what we've done with you, Mike, and your team in Watts and in Harbor City and San Pedro. Can, is that, I mean, as these dollars come through in the coming years, we can adjust accordingly?
Oh, absolutely. And it, and it will. The, the, the reason why judo and I think tennis are in there is because those were programs that we were working on with you, with the USA program. So it, and our new, what we call signature programs, as we were talking about earlier, we fully intend in bringing forward a skateboarding signature program to where we can start actually programming some of our skate parks. And even better is what we're planning to do is to make sure that we're going to try to hold annual events around the city for competitions and then hold a citywide, you know, kind of crown of Los Angeles, you know, skateboarding champion. We're going to try to do that in a lot of different sports, whether it be tennis or others. But skateboarding is going to be one of the ones that, you know, I'm pretty excited about because we have such great assets.
Yep.
And skateboarding was born here. And it's not yet an Olympic sport here in '28, I believe, but I'm sure it will be. And we're, I mean, we feel that, honestly, I feel that if there's, of all of the different athletes, that we may have a chance of getting somebody in. I think there's the highest potential of a local skateboarder being in the Olympics.
Also sailing. We have, we have youth sailing in the district, which leads me to expanding accessibility and having the ability to partner with our local nonprofits. You know, the Cabrillo Beach Yacht Club has a nonprofit that exposes kids to sailing. We have amazing nonprofits, Student Run LA, LA84. The 2020 project plan doesn't include collaborating with local nonprofits. This is something that our office heard. I see Councilwoman Martinez, she's fielding calls as well. But do you anticipate that future project plans will? And if so, how will that be implemented? There's a lot of organizations that have access to kids today. They're, and they're incredible existing programs. And we want to be able to leverage these types of organizations in our city.
That's a great question. And 100% agree that we're going to, no, this, this is only for the spring. And the reason why, I mean, it's, it's more of an administrative thing that needs to, that needs to take place, that we're actively working on, is we need to be able to create. So we're preparing different RFQs, request for qualifications, for those nonprofits to actually apply. We need to set up a system for, we can actually pay them or reimburse them for the cost of the, of the programs that they're offering. So we couldn't really do that until the agreement got to a point to where we knew the details of the agreement. Because everything that's in the agreement has to be mirrored in, in whatever we're required to do. Any nonprofit that would partner with us is going to, they need to, they're going to be under the same requirements. So I say all that to say is that we got to create a lot of different contracts, whether it's for track and field, or marathon running, or, you know, sailing, or skateboarding.
Sure, sure.
All of those RFQs are actually in process now. And so we're really working hard to get all of those in place so that next year's project plan, the full year, will have some of those things in it and allow us to, to bring those organizations under contract and then have them actually provide some of those services.
Got that. Appreciate that. This is, I mean, this is, it's our infant stages. And I know we're going to be nimble as, as these project plans come forward. So I want to thank Ms. Rodriguez for being here and being present. Sorry, Monica. And with that, I also want to recognize Mr. Kukorian for this. I had the same question on the infrastructure. We can, and you've heard me say this in this committee, when we made this agreement with, with our Olympic friends, you know, we can have all the programming, but if we have a crumbling infrastructure, we're doing a disservice of the kids to be at, at these parks. And I know we have a crack pool in San Pedro. I mean, but we added a beautiful pool down the street. So this is just one of several concerns that we have. And I know that we're going to be working with your department to ensure that we, capital improvements are, are focused and prioritized.
Yes, thank you. Infrastructure is extraordinarily important to the success for everything that we do. So I appreciate that.
Okay. So I'm going to go to Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Price. And Ms. Rodriguez, of course, if you want to chime in, you're welcome. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's interesting, when we were talking, had this conversation about bringing the 2024 Olympics to Los Angeles, a lot of us were pretty upfront with, well, what will the city of Los Angeles look like afterward? What will our benefits be? And we, we, I persisted in, in asking that question when it was decided that we would do the joint bid with Paris. And we, we chose 2028, which I think is going to work out much better to our benefit because it has allowed LA 28 and the city to craft this legacy partnership. And in a way, we're already benefiting the city of Los Angeles before the, eight years before the Olympics or even here. So we're eight years ahead of what I was looking for. And that is, what will Los Angeles look like after the 2028 Olympics? We're going to see what Los Angeles looks like eight years before the 2028 Olympics because it's coming here. So I want to commend everyone for this, like I said, legacy agreement and arrangement that benefits the youth of Los Angeles as never before. I think it's amazing. And I think it's such a winning story. And I hope that this really sets the tone for future Olympics wherever they may, may be in the world. Having said that, I have, I have two specific questions. In relation to the safe program, what are some of the details of the safe program and what are its objectives?
Referring to Safe Sport?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, so Safe Sport is a, is a organization that we're, actually, it's another one of the contracts that we're working on, is we need to figure out a way to, through a, through a contract to bring their services in. They're, they're really going to come in and help fill, you know, gaps and where we're, where things that protect the children are, where we may be, need improvement on, or we need to add or expand upon. So it's just going to give, provide another set of eyes on all of our processes, all of our policies, all of the trainings that we do to make sure that the children participating in our programs are 100% safe.
In a safe environment?
And it's, correct.
And all that that means, including infrastructure, safety, including training, safety, et cetera, mentoring, safety?
All of the above. I mean, it's, it, it, it just, it's a really, it just, another great layer. I mean, we're, we've welcomed it. I mean, we feel that we've got good policies, but you can never be lax, you know, you can never rest on your, you know, on your laws of, of the programs or the policies that you have. There's always room for improvement.
And you'll be reporting back on the, what the details of?
Yes. I mean, they're going to be, Safe Sport is going to be a very big part of, of us moving forward. And we're, we're actively engaged with them now in working out the details of that. So as we get further along in that, we'll certainly be reporting back.
It's, I think it's important to reiterate that point. The department already has robust Safe Sport programs in place. And this is another layer, coming in to help evaluate and recommend and help develop new ways to expand that. It's, it's always important to, to test what you're doing and find better ways to do it. But they already have strong programs in place. So we don't want to have any misunderstanding on that.
Right, yeah. This is a new layer with, with this agreement with the IOC. So I'm sure there are requirements that must be met in that, you know, from their perspective as well.
Yes. And we welcome it. We really do. I mean, we welcome the, for, for that extra oversight over, over everything we do. Because at the end of the day, there's nothing more important to us to make sure than to make sure that the children are safe, the kids are safe playing in the programs that we offer.
And then, AP, did you have something to add? I'm sorry.
I was just going to add one last point that, and the, the greatest benefit is that it comes with money. So it does not, will not diminish, you know, an impact on the city's general fund, on rec and parks' general fund. It's a tattamount import to the, to the games as a whole, to LA 2028, to IOC, and certainly to the city. So it's, it's a win-win for everyone.
Right. Well, with all that we know, with recent, you know, tragedies of the past in terms of youth and mentoring and coaching and everything else, we have so many best practices to prevent anything, you know, unfortunate from happening moving forward. So I think that's terrific. So well done on that. And I look forward to hearing more details. And then the other one is the 87 site certified parks. Read through the list. I can kind of see the rationale for the choice, but can you daylight how those sites were selected and, and why, out of the 123 rec centers that would qualify for sports programs?
Yeah. No, we, we started looking at, we looked at the baseline participation, first of all, to see where, what levels of participation we had. We quickly found that, you know, just looking at the levels of participation that in the lower income neighborhoods around the city, that our rec centers were not running at the, the levels that they should be, which allowed us to look further into. And we simply looked at the economics around, you know, the, within a half mile radius of that park, is what is the income level around the half mile radius? And we quickly made correlations between participation and income and removing costs as a barrier. And so we, we chose a line of $70,000 or less within a half mile radius of that facility to decide that, to, to put them in the 87 or to put them into self-certified sites. It's really kind of that simple of how we did it. We didn't want to, any of those families to be, have to worry about providing any type of information other than just bringing your kids to show up and, and to play. So we've made it quite easy by self-certifying them to do that. That's the rationale.
Terrific. And in, in that sense, have you thought about what kind of assistance you may need in helping to get the word out? Will there be increased outreach, increased, maybe even advertising, maybe even get some of, some, something like that underwritten so that we can really saturate these neighborhoods, that this benefit is coming soon? And we, we encourage participation?
Yes, absolutely, council members. So some of the success of some of the legacy programs that already exist in the city that you all enjoy, such as Girls Play LA, Kids LA, Summer Night Lights, those are all based on a model of focused, targeted, community outreach in manners that the community can understand, feel safe with, that speaks to parents. So another negotiated part of the YSA agreement that you are agreeing upon today, if you vote that way, was a negotiation made with 2028, again, to provide and set aside dollars so that we can do exactly, replicate that model. But we're going to be doing it in a much broader unified way throughout the entire city because we really want participation to grow. That's the baseline legacy of how this program's going to work. So we're absolutely going to do that. We're going to bring on professionals to assist us with that and the overall branding of the department. So it's really going to be an exciting time to highlight those programs and then highlight the other things like the Safe Sport and all of the other things that make this program so unique and will be great. so unique and will be great.
Terrific. Please inform anyone that you contract with on this effort to contact our field offices directly, because we can add another layer of outreach. The deputies in the areas are in the neighborhoods all the time, and, and that can be an additional tool that perhaps who you contract with may not appreciate. So if you could add that as a component, that would be terrific. And then, just lastly, in terms of the skate parks, I love, I love the idea of incorporating some of these sites with specialized training and everything. So to Mr. Buscagno's point, we opened North Chevy Chase Park, which is just a home run, and then we have a world-class skate park opening at Echo Park Rec Center that could be a wonderful training facility. And I was delighted to see both of those parks on the site-certified list, as well as Lemon Grove. So, and Lake Street, where we have our other rebuilt skate park. So, so it's wonderful to, to be able to, to, in these neighborhoods, introduce skateboarding and sports that haven't been perceived as available to everyone previously, to populations that will have access to them. So I'm a real big believer in that effort as well. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Chairman, I'm excited to support this program. It really does mean a great deal in underserved areas like the ones I represent, to, to know that these resources are going to be available for everybody, and I think that's really got to be a key. I certainly support the comments made about the program being flexible, and you suggested it will be quarterly, almost quarterly, sort of changing out programs. And also the accountability, you know, making sure that the funds are spent as intended for our youth, and that's, that's very important. I want to piggyback, though, on a comment made by my colleague Gil Sadio about the, about the $10. Certainly, you know, we want to make sure that we're removing costs as a barrier, and we, and we appreciate the fact that these services are going to be virtually free. But 10 bucks is 10 bucks, you know, to, to a struggling, single mom or so that's got, you know, two or three kids or more, and she has to do this three or four times a year, two or three times a year, whatever it is. So I just think we got to be mindful of that. You indicated that cost is not going to be a problem. We should just make sure that that's a clear message so that that doesn't turn people away or off. But also, maybe we, we look at ways of encouraging folks to volunteer as a part of that buy-in. You know, again, for a program to be as robust as we say it will be, I think there may be a role for volunteers to help out, to, to assist in some areas, in some ways, that would permit us to tap into a whole new vein of volunteers and supporters of this program. So I'd just give it some thought. And then finally, I, I, I agree with the idea of skate parks, you know, they've been successful in our area, being able to include that. And not just the parks, but also working with other nonprofit organizations, especially those that may be providing some youth athletic activities already. I know the intent is certainly to build the infrastructure, to support the youth, but we got to look at also, I think, organizations that are serving youth. And if there's a way, as you suggested, you're going to be contracting with a number of organizations to provide services. I think you ought to be looking at how you can plug in some community-based organizations that have been doing it with, with, with little or no support in the past, and who may have an opportunity to grow as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian adds a couple of follow-ups.
Thank you, very, thank you, Mr. President. Couple of brief suggestions and then one question. First, with regard to the infrastructure and capital investment issue, I think this is an area where, Mr. Buscagno mentioned some of the nonprofits, but also our private sector partners who will want to partner in these sorts of programs, great opportunity for them to do that would be with one-time money. So if there's a, an equity program that's moving forward, it can be supported with a corporate contribution or something of one-time money that can be used for capital improvements. That would be something I would think we would want to leverage into this if we can. And then with regard to the making it free issue, I, what I think I was hearing from you, Mike, was that the idea of having a fee is to ensure that a, a youth participant stays involved. It's so that there's kind of skin in the game, if you will. There's a youth program I know of, highly successful youth, youth program, actually in Armenia, in which, that's free, after-school program, but they have an upfront, small fee, which is then refunded at the end of a certain period of time if the youth has stayed involved. So this might be a way where, I mean, it still might be a little burdensome for a low-income family to come up with the upfront costs, but at least if they know that they're going to get that back, that might be an opportunity to fulfill the, the goal that you're trying to accomplish with that, some, some variation on that. Finally, my question. I, I would like to understand a little bit better the LA 2028 approval process and role in this, because we submit our plan every year, LA 2028 approves that plan. First, I'm assuming that the, really the only role of the approval is to ensure that the plan meets the requirements that are specified in the contract. The, the idea is not to have some subjective role in deciding, well, I know you want to spend it on that, but we have our ideas about where it should be spent. Is that, am I correct about that?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. We crafted this agreement to give Wreckin' Parks very broad discretion to craft an annual project plan that meets our collective objectives. And we also structured it so that Recreation and Parks can work with you to develop that plan well in advance of the, the fiscal year that it will be applied to. And so there will be, there's, it allows for plenty of time for planning and execution.
Great, thank you. And then, I'm sorry if this is a little technical, but there's deadlines that are specified in here in the reporting process. Deadline for Wreckin' Parks, no later than January 31st to present the plan. And I, this says 2020, but I assume that deadline is, is going to roll forward into future years as well. So there's a deadline for submission, and then there's a 14-day window for LA 2028 to either say yes or no. And so I'm wondering, what are, what if those deadlines aren't met? What if Wreckin' Parks is late? What if 14 days pass and LA 2028 hasn't been able to get a quorum together to, to approve? I would hope that the submission is deemed approval and less than, approved and less denied, and I would like to know what the consequences are if LA, if Recreation and Parks is late in doing the submission.
I'll let Mr. Shaw add to this answer, but I, from my perspective, the short answer is that we expect we're going to enjoy, continue to enjoy a very close working relationship, because we are mutually invested in this goal of making programs available to all kids. And so I don't see us needing to rely on the technical remedies of the agreement ever, but I'll let the staff speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've built enough in the front end of it to make sure, ideally, we will have submitted the plan and gone through the approval process well in advance of needing the money. So hence the dates that's in the agreement. But I don't, I don't, I mean, getting through these first, just, I mean, we're, this is brand new, we're, we're going through the process now. I think once we've established that process, I don't see it as being an issue, not certainly on our behalf. I feel like we've set up the, the systems that we can populate a plan very quickly. I, I just don't see it as being a major hurdle for us, and as Brent's is saying, that I, I think we're, going forward, we're, you know, our relationship is such that, you know, there's a pretty strong understanding of what we're trying to do here.
Totally agree, and, and I don't mean to suggest that this is a big deal or a likely conflict, but we're talking about an eight-year contract.
Right.
That, as I mentioned before, will involve at least two, possibly three mayors, future council members, you know, changing priorities, ups and downs of the economy. We have to kind of think ahead to, and I just think it would be a tighter contract if the submission is deemed approved, if not denied after 14 days. Then we don't need to worry about delays. And I would also, you know, just want to make sure that the city is not going to suffer some loss if it doesn't meet the deadline. I mean, stuff could happen. You're not always going to be general manager either, maybe, you know, so there may be somebody who is not as well organized as you, who comes forward and just misses, misses that. I would just want to make sure that the city is not disadvantaged by that sort of thing. I, it's not a big deal, it's not, it's not a big enough deal to, to make an issue of here. I want to highlight the issue and hope that we can have a continuing discussion about how to make sure that stuff doesn't happen.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Ms. Rodriguez, did you want to, or she? No, I'm, I'm getting in the, okay.
I actually can't, but Ms. Rodriguez and I had a.
Go right ahead.
So, Ms. Rodriguez and I were just having a discussion, actually, about, and if she's not able to ask it, I'll ask it as well. What, there's going to be some ramp-up time in getting this program going. So do you anticipate being able to spend the first year money in the first year, number one? And number two, there's going to be, the agreement provides, as I understand it, that unspent allocations for a particular year will roll forward, won't be lost. Am I right about that, first of all?
Yes.
Okay. So do you anticipate that you're going to be able to hire sufficiently, set up the administration, get up and running quickly enough to be able to spend first-year money in the first fiscal year?
I do. I, the, there will be a ramp-up time, and, you know, our numbers are based on where our current participation is, and we've looked at what we believe our capacity is. And so looking at what percentage of capacity we can achieve every year. So I would tell you, we're, we're estimating that in the first three years, after the first three years, we will be at capacity in our recreation centers. The, the trick to all of this is also looking at, and kind of like looking, you know, budget-wise down the road, is how much money, you know, it's not a matter of spending all the money on the recreational sports that we're doing, is us also looking forward to stuff that we want to add, particularly around adaptive sports, particularly around different programs with nonprofit partners that we don't currently have. So we need to hold back some money as we're looking forward to how we budget for those things within, within the, the annual allocation. And I, I think it's important to say at this point is that, and I've, I've tried to do it with our existing other partners, is to say to them is that, this is a lot of money, but we still need you, and we need more of you, so don't go away. Because it's, although this is a lot of money, it's not enough money to do truly what we want to do. And, you know, if we want to start expanding into schools and doing, you know, a lot of the things that we could do, we need more partners, not, not less. So it's, I mean, I think that's, you know, I think that message got to be, was starting to get a little lost with some of our partners, like, oh, wow, you're getting all this money, you don't, you know?
That's exactly our concern.
And it's, that is not the case. We need that and more to do more. I, our staff is, I think we're as ready, I mean, I, in some ways, I'm glad it's taken a little bit of time, because it's allowed us to get very, very organized. And we're ready to launch, and with this, with approval of the city council of this agreement, we will launch this spring, and this will be, you know, a very successful program, and we're, I'm not too worried about that. I need to, what, what I'm mostly concerned about is getting a lot of these contracts in place to allow us to bring in nonprofit partners to do some of the things that we don't do very well.
Right.
And to be able to expand and create adaptive sports programs. That's, that's the real work ahead of us, is, is in that world.
So another helpful part of that, in addition to nonprofits in the private sector, might very well be the organizing, the governing federations of the sports that will be Olympic sports. They could come in as partners as well, and especially, again, in the facilities development part.
Yep.
But in addition to all of that, Mike, since you're talking about being at capacity within three years, I'm going to ask you to come to the council with a proposal for expanding those facilities to be able to meet, to accommodate additional capacity after three years.
Excellent.
Because in, in, and I think this is, since we have this benefit now, and I believe we will have a continuing benefit after 2028 from surplus revenues from the Olympics, I'm confident of that still. I think we need to expand physical capacity, and now is the time to start with developing that proposal for the next decade.
100% agree, and we actually have plans in place to expand facilities right now, and so we could share that as whenever the, the council would like me to, to do that, but we 100, 100% agree.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Any, Mr. Buscagno?
I want to respond to Mr. Sadio's concern about the $10 fee. And I, I think it, it needs to be brought up, and my, I have all my faith and trust and confidence in your ability to say that, yes, we're not going to turn anybody away. But I would feel more comfortable, like, in, in the, in the application, there would be some indication that families, that scholarships are available for families who can't afford the $10. This is why. Today, in the Los Angeles Unified School District, there are 17,000 homeless kids living in cars, couched, couch surfing, moving from home to home, living in shelters. And i- if, if, and as, as a Wreckin' Park, a Wreckin' Park rat myself, who grew up in, at McDonavis Park, or what was that, in San Pedro Park, and a Wreckin' Park assistant, my first city job was at McDonavis Park, running these leagues. I would hate to have a mom, a single mom, a single dad, just tell him or herself, I just can't afford the $10. But if they knew that there was a scholarship available, and it is identified in the application process, and they would be aware that at least they'd be able not, I mean, have that ability not to pay for that fee.
Well, you know, let, let me jump in for a second, Mr. Buscagno. So obviously, though, you've heard concerns where it relates to this. So there is a level of uncomfortableness with us. So, you know, Mr. Kukorian's brought up some good suggestions, so has Mr. Price. Why don't you look at an option to the buy-in? Because you don't have to buy in with money. So if you want to charge the five bucks, 10 bucks, they can either be a team mom, they can volunteer, they can help set up, so, I mean, so, you know, we, it's enough heartburn that I think that you guys need to work on this and come back with, going forward, how to address these concerns.
But I, I can understand the buy-in, because when my daughter.
No, I get that, and I'm not saying, Mr. Buscagno, not to have a buy-in.
Right, right.
What I am suggesting is having options as a buy-in.
Right.
And that they should come back and tell us.
An option.
These are options to buy in. I believe in buy-in.
Right, right.
But we should, if, if you have concerns where it relates to the financial component, then let's have a series of options. I like Mr. Kukorian's. You stay X amount of time, then you receive a refund. So there are all kinds of options that could be placed. I'm sorry, but when you said that, I, I meant to say it earlier, and you just reminded me of that, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I'm confident we can come back with something that, the $10, I mean, there is no revenue value, I mean, we, we're not incorporating that, that's not, it's not about revenue. None of this is about revenue. So just allow us to come back and, and, you know, we need to look at what's in the agreement and see how that's worded, and, and before it comes to city council next week, is, is have something figured out.
Thanks, Mike.
Options. What we did, we gave away some free computers, right, before, to some of the LAUSD kids. And so the parents that wanted to participate had to come in and take a two-hour lesson on how to use a computer. That was their buy-in. I mean, so you just have to creatively come up with ways to do it. Plus, I think, like Gilbert said earlier, it, it, it's cost more money and more of a pain to collect $10, maybe, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, with that said.
Can I reiterate?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sadio, reiterate.
So what I ask my staff all the time when we go through these exercises is, what's our goal? And, and I rely on both my personal life experiences and the experiences of our district. And so as Mr. Buscagno indicated, 17,000 homeless kids. A friend of mine that I grew up with, and we participated in many of these programs at the local parks, went on to have a very illustrious career, USC, Atlanta Falcons. He coaches, and we talk a lot about leadership and coaching and teaching people. And he says, one of the most amazing.
And he says, one of the most amazing things that he finds phenomenal today is that he has homeless athletes. And that, as he coaches at the, the community college level, there, there are young men there who don't have a place to live. So I'm thinking that's, that population is exactly the population that we want. We don't need a buy-in from them. They need an opportunity. And so that population has to be integrated into this. That should be our goal. I have a shelter down the street, and I think of the mother, we have families upstairs in suites, we have, uh, singles downstairs, and I think of the kids at the shelter. We give them three squares, et cetera. We've made it as nice as it can be, but it's still a shelter. And I think about those kids, they need an opportunity. And, and so I, I, at the beginning, we're designing this program, we're making policy choices. And one of our policy choices is to embrace unnecessary administrative costs, to solve a problem that I'm not quite sure we know exists. And we have to look at the face of Los Angeles today, all of it, and realize that in the design of this, we may be doing two things that I don't think are, are a part of our goal. Adding unnecessary additional administrative costs, and then creating barriers that are unnecessary. And so, again, I ask you, let's focus on the goal, and, and keep that in mind so that we can move forward. Because I, I don't want to vote no, but I, I cannot accept this, so.
Well, so now you see the heartburn. That issue needs to be worked out, that needs to be given some more thought. We do need to focus on the population mentioned by Mr. Buscagino and by Mr. Sadio, where 10 bucks is more than 10 bucks, Mr. Price. So if you guys could refine that, we have time to do that, come up with other options for buy-in, come up with something somewhere memorialized, where in the event that you have children that are in shelters or homeless, that they shouldn't even be burdened with this. So why don't you come back with a more refined plan?
Absolutely.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, so with, with that said, on, uh, item one, I, I recommend that we adopt the, the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners Report dated January 27th, and the CAO and the CLA's joint report. And on item two, that we adopt the City Attorney's Report and draft ordinance.
So moved.
Okay, so that is approved unanimous. Mr. Clerk, is there any other business before this committee?
No, sir.
This committee is adjourned.